We're starting now and I will call roll and as good as, as much as I know, I will try to include who they are with. I just need a quick present or I kind of thing as we're going through just to speed up this process. Arnold Whitridge.
Here.
Joseph and Susan Bauer.
Here.
Barry Stewart.
Here.
John Knight.
Here.
Larry Glass.
Here.
Larry Winter.
Here.
I have to assume this is Bob Morris.
Good morning.
Ross and Susan Mullenow.
I'm here. Ross is not today.
Okay, I assume that you'll be a proxy.
Yeah, I sent in an email last night. I don't know if anybody.
Okay, I didn't catch that. Thank you. Let's see, Chris Losi, U.S. Forest Service.
Here.
Okay, everything keeps skipping around. It's driving me crazy. Jenny Erickson, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Yep, here.
Christine Jordan, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Here.
Jeremy Brown, District Four Trinity County Supervisor.
President.
Joe Stuvinick, U.S. Forest Service.
Here and I'm acting for Sarah Akridge, who's out sick today.
Great, thanks, Joe. Carrie Otto, U.S. Forest Service, Chef of Trinity.
Hey, hey, good morning. I'm here and to my left, probably your right, is our new forest supervisor, Rachel Burkey.
Good morning, Rachel. Welcome.
Thank you.
Let's see, Lejon Hayman, U.S. Forest Service, Acting Six Rivers.
Here.
Let's see. Carol Fall and Pat Frost.
Here.
Samantha Chilco.
Here, acting as a proxy for Mike Dixon.
Mike Dixon, all right. Welcome, Sam.
Thank you.
Stephanie Reese, U.S. Forest Service, Chef of Trinity.
Morning.
Ted MacArthur, U.S. Forest Service, Six Rivers.
Good morning.
Nick Goulet, Watershed Center.
Here.
Dylan Sheedy, Watershed Center.
Yeah, here, good morning.
Let's see. Diana Sheen, I'm guessing.
Yes, here and Terry.
Okay, very good. Hi, Mom.
Hi.
Hi, Son.
Hi, Dad. Let's see. Jeremy Marshall.
I'm here. Good morning, everybody.
Who are you? Are you're with U.S. Forest Service?
Yeah, I'm Six Rivers. I'm the Natural Resource Staff Officer. I'm the new Carolyn Cook.
Ah, new Carolyn Cook, very good. Welcome, Jeremy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And I saw somebody else just coming in. Who did I just see? Keith Greenwood, SDI.
Hi there. Sorry, I'm late.
Did I miss anyone?
Jerry Cousins is here.
Oh, Jerry Cousins, okay. All right, did you also just call in on a cellphone?
No.
Okay.
This Tom Waltz.
Hey, Tom. I thought that was your number. Okay, anyone else that I missed? I think we're good to go. Take it away, Pat.
Okay, so first off, Kelly, everybody, so if the noise levels on my end kind of get distracting to folks, I'm going to turn things over to Kelly to kind of facilitate just, just a lot going on in my house at the moment. So I had just one quick clarification for Samantha. When you say you are proxying for Mike Dixon, that's Mike Dixon in the role of Trinity County Fishing Game Commission, right? Not Trinity River Restoration Program?
Correct.
Okay, just so everybody understands, so everybody in Trinity County wears multiple hats. So the only proxy that we noted was Susan for Ross Mullenow. Is there anybody else serving as a proxy? No? Okay, so we have a fairly busy agenda. I probably put too much stuff on the agenda and probably forgot some important things. So kind of let's first, a quick review of the collective memory, if anybody had anything they wanted or thought needed to be changed. If it's just little commas and spellings and things like that, just send Kelly an email if it's something substantive, let us know now.
Just wanted to know who's responsible for it. It was quite the job. It's great.
Where's the, yeah, let Kelly explain.
I have a, my, my office manager Rebecca Wolfenbarger basically looks at these recordings and, and tries to pretty much, I've instructed her to capture everything as much as possible. We try not to scrimp on the notes because oftentimes if we're referring back, we want to have some other detail. So, yeah, she's been doing a pretty darn good job.
Yeah, I'd say she captured everything.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, she'll probably be seeing this later, but I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Okay, so how about agenda checks? So are there, so one thing that we put on the agenda because it was requested last time, but we're not sure if there is somebody to speak to it, is down in that 1045 slot, barred owls versus spotted owls? Do we, do we have anybody knowledgeable enough to kind of carry that discussion? Or do we need to postpone that until we get the right people?
I had been contacted by Christine Jordan that she had said that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service was not prepared to make its comments to that effect. I also spoke with Keith Greenwood to that effect and he had essentially the same response. So I, I'm not sure who, I don't, for that item, I didn't have a clear, I had, it seemed like to me that that was something that we would probably want, you know, fish and game, you know, fish and wildlives, like California Fish and Wildlife Service possibly to comment on, but I'm not sure if we want to get some commitment about that from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Can we ask for further clarification on what you guys are looking for with this topic?
In prime. I had missed that part of the meeting last time, so I'm totally out of the loop. So, and, and the collective memory is fairly brief.
I'll say, I'll say something to it. I think I know what Diane brought it up and I think I know what she was getting after. It was mentioned in the presentation that there is a program underway to call out or kill barred owls because they're a big competitor of the spotted owl. That, you know, upset Diane, so she wanted to know just exactly what the program is, what's going on with it.
I think it would be helpful for us to know what program she was referring to because I'm not familiar with.
Oh, the, the, the program is, is to reduce the competition from the barred owl to the northern spotted owl.
Yeah, that's, that I understand that. But if, if there is a specific program that's taking place in a specific geographic location.
No, I think it was, I think it was more generalized, Jenny.
Ah, gotcha.
Just, just the global issue.
Okay. Well, Fish and Wildlife Service, we could probably speak to that, but we're not prepared to today.
Okay, so how about it, we schedule it for our July meeting? Do you think that would work?
Sure.
Okay, great. Okay, so that frees up a little bit of time for other discussions. Are there things, other edits, changes to the agenda? Many over the years continue to ring true.
I'm going to mute, I'm going to mute you, Barry.
Okay, sorry, call coming in.
So are there other, other changes to the agenda that need to be made? Anybody, anything else? So what, so, so the, the, the first big topic then that we have, and this was at the request of Joseph Bauer to be on the agenda, which I tried to capture, I think, the idea of kind of, you know, stepping back a little bit and thinking about and focusing on the stewardship goals that the collaborative kind of lined out early on in its, its life. And I'm a little bit at a disadvantage in the sense that I was trying not to get involved in the collaborative at all and failed around 2016 or so. But I wasn't around during the formative kind of period for the collaborative and I started just trying to think about that timeframe and issues and my mind went actually back to when I first came here and was at the RCD and was being sent to, I think they were called bioregion meetings and the same kind of issues were coming up. And it seemed to me, and I thought about it in context of the field trips to the first 48 that we, we did last year, I think it was, and the year before, to kind of the top, kind of South Fork Mountain to look at the plantation thinning projects and issues around wholeness, the wholeness of projects, the completeness of projects, you know, not just getting, you know, the harvest done or
My, my star.
Or not just getting, you know, the, the fuel reduction, the main thinning done, the pre-commercial thins done, but getting all the activity fuels handled and, you know, thinking about projects in a more, in a completer sense. And I don't know if that kind of captures what Joseph was initially thinking about, but I thought probably the best thing is let, go ahead, Larry.
Pat, it was, it was me as well. And I particularly, and I'll let Joseph speak for himself, but I particularly want to review the lessons learned at first 48.
Okay, so why don't we just start there then?
Well, I mean, we, we did a project there. It wasn't done yet, but we all went out and looked at it. We're really happy with the way it looked at the time we were there, looked at it. Some people, like Joseph, questioned at the time, all the fuels laying on the ground. And we were told that it would take until the end of the project, so not until all the commercial aspect of the project was finished, before the Forest Service would start cleaning up the fuels. So then we have the August complex fire come in, get into those fuels, and our project basically got ruined. You know, because our hopeful outcome of a nice shaded fuel break that we could show the world now is pretty much burned up.
So as I recollect the, the field trip, one of the things I recall is people were generally, when you say happy with how it looked, was kind of the, the spacing of trees and, you know, the prescription that was used for the harvest seemed like what we had hoped for, but the issue was with the slash and the activity fuels that were still there.
That's correct.
Okay.
All right, this, I, this is Joseph. You know, this is part of a continuing problem that we need to talk about. You know, first of all, I, I'd like to start by saying, I was thinking back in 2013 and how much progress we were making. We, you know, we'd crafted a charter and we had found some subcommittees to work on different issues. We had come up with a, a way we wanted to see the Forest Service proceed on forest work, and that was our shaded fuel break and plantation project. And we were hopeful that we would do 1,000 miles in the first 10 years. Well, we're eight years into it and we don't have much to show for it yet. And we need to figure out, outside of the fire problem, what else we need to fine tune here. So anyway, you know, one of the things has been the fuels cleanup. And, and more on the Mad River, you know, we had done this, endorsed a salvage project that Dan put together on top of South Fork Mountain after the 2015 fires. And the logging got done, but my gosh, it was waist deep in slash and there were still standing dead trees. And it didn't meet the fire kill the fuel break prescription at all that, that we had proposed. And it got burned up again. It's still a mess out there, but fire went through it again last year. So it's, it seems like it's a continuing problem about getting the fuels cleaned up. And one of the things I see as a problem is the Forest Service feels they have to close out the contract, which can be, you know, three years, maybe even five years, in order to go to work on the fuels. That seems like it needs a little adjustment, such as close these projects out, you know, a unit or a road system at a time, so that the, the fuels treatment can begin immediately after the logging. And while the equipment is onsite, that is the time that it makes sense to use that equipment to do any work that needs to be done by equipment, rather than, you know, somebody else has to move equipment in. It makes it more expensive. So anyway, you know, we appreciate the Mad River working so closely with us, but we do need to tune up the, the fuels cleanup. We did have another project out to Acre Woods and we had the same discussion about, it seems there's a reluctance to do the fuels cleanup. So, and some of the collaborative members have suggested that we reduce that minimum 100-foot cleanup to 25 feet. And I think that does not meet the goals that we set out. So, so much for Mad River. You know, we come over the hill here to the trendy side and there isn't much to point to that's happened on the ground outside of the West Side Thinning Project, which we didn't have a hand in developing, but we endorsed it. It sounded like a good idea. I think it was nearly 5,000 acres of thinning, some commercial, some non-commercial. And it, it seems like the, the logging got done. There was supposed to be $600,000 worth of revenue out of that that was going to be put back into the project area to do the non-commercial and that was either through stewardship or some kind of retained receipts agreement. And I'm not sure what's, what's happened to that, but it, I do know about the, the one plantation that I've watched since it was planted 40 something years ago, was the one right above Hidden Valley Ranch, right near Larry's property. And that got thinned, but it was this variable density thinning and there were still clumps of, of thick, thick trees and patches all through the unit. Plus the fuels, there was some tractor piling, but there was a lot of fuels left behind. That burned up last, last summer too, and it's a total loss. Where, whether the, if the fuels clean up and a different prescription would have saved it, I don't know, but it's definitely a failure. So coming over the hill here on, on Trinity, the, the, the West Side project with the non-commercial thinning concerned me because roaming around the forest, I'd seen some non-commercial thinning that seemed like it was a total waste of money. The units were still so full of slash and in many cases, we're trying to convert a hardwood forest into conifer plantations. It just seemed like it was a waste of money and misguided. And so Tom Hall took us out on a field trip. He selected the sites to show us. Those of you that went along, remember it was one rainy day. We got pretty wet, but it was the same thing. We looked at, at a couple of units up Big Creek that were a total waste in terms of thinning because they were loaded with slash. They'd been done two or three years before. They were not part of the West Side project, but they were the same prescription as to be used in the non-commercial plantations in, in West Side. So then we looked at another site that was again, trying to convert a Madrone Forest into a conifer plantation. It just seemed totally misguided to me. So it seems like we need to talk more about how to accomplish fuels cleanup and get prescriptions so that they attain what we're hoping to do in the terms of plantations, make them more fire resilient. In the terms of the fuel breaks along the roads, we need to make sure that there's enough cleanup done, that they are going to be effective when fire comes or they're used as anchors for burnout. So anyway, that's my pitch. I think those are things we need to revisit and see if we can encourage the Forest Service to make a few changes and, and the story.
Okay, thank you, Larry and, and Joseph. So other, other people, other thoughts on this? So John, you're muted, John Knight.
Yeah, I mean, they certainly have a good point. Without a timely follow-up on slash treatment, you're spinning your wheels. You can't argue with what they saw.
Yeah. Others, any, anybody else, any other thoughts? Good. Put someone on the spot just because, I mean, someone.
Jerry, Jerry here. I kind of like to hear from Forest Service folks, both Forests, on how they view the cleanup. Is it, is, is it accurate that they can't start it until the whole logging show is complete? Or can they do it areas at a time as the loggers move over? Just kind of get their perspective up, please.
Yeah, who from the Forest Service would like to take a crack at this?
I'll jump in if that's all right. Um, yeah, you know, and that's an excellent point and it's, it's, you know, I'll be frank, it's something we have wrestled with. So, so we absolutely can move into units after they've been, been logged and they've moved into another unit. We, the, the balance is when we're moving in and doing those, whether it's burning piles or, or, it depends on the nature of the fuels cleanup. If it's underburning or burning piles, we just have to be careful about where we're doing that adjacent to active logging operations. If it, if it's chipping and mulching, you know, that's, that's a little bit different. We have, I think, our, our, some of the work we've been doing over on the WKRP side in Somes Bar, we've learned some lessons there on how we can do it a little bit better. And I think we can bring those lessons and apply them on this side and do a little bit better job of, you know, how we, how we get those, the, the, the understory cleanup done after the mechanical treatments. It's, it's, it's not, it's not lost on us. That, that's some, some area that we have room for improvement.
Okay, thank you, Ted. So I thought Joseph was starting to light, his box was lighting up. Not sure if he wanted to jump back in.
Terry Sheen, I'd like to jump in too.
Chris Losi has his hand up.
Oh, well, I, I don't see all the boxes, so go ahead, Chris.
Hey, um, yeah, so I listened, I listened thoroughly to, to what Joseph was saying. You know, there, there's definitely some, you know, so a lot of things to think about there. But I did want to mention that one project that he didn't mention was the Dubicella project. And in the Dubicella Plantations Insect Disease Project, we've got a nice, big area, several hundred acres around, around Wildwood that we're planning to burn. And so with the burning there, there is no, you know, there is no harvest. So we may be able to start this winter actually on prescribed fire. And this, this is an area that's just around southwest corner of the Wildwood community. And I don't know the exact number of acres. I think it's close to 1,000, but it's, it's all plantations and we're going to be able to do some, do some burning in that area. And that should, that should create some, some woo-woo protection for the, the southern edge of Wildwood. In fact, probably in line with the prevailing winds. So, you know, that's, just want to make sure that we recognize that, you know, you did mention, you know, the West Side Plantation Project. That's a long-term project and we've got, we've got definitely stuff to do there. Pilot, we'll talk about that later, but, you know, I didn't want to forget Dubicella. And there's stuff that we're going to be starting to work on, I believe, this fall, after the LOPE is done and after the, the fire weather cools down.
Great, thank you, Chris. So Terry Sheen.
Yes, so I, can you hear me? Am I muted? Can you hear me? Okay, so I, I was out to Minersville doing some fishing, bass fishing. And on the way out, the Forest Service, and they have cleaned up the upper side of the road, up 100 so feet up the hill. I don't know if CDF did that or, I know we didn't, so it must have been CDF crews. But that really looks nice. They limbed everything up and cleaned up the thing. I don't see where they burned anything. So it must have been taken to the bottom of the road and then hauled away. But anyway, that's a real good example of uphill cleaning up the fuels and really looks nice from Weaverville, driving out to Minersville is where I went down and did the bass station. But yeah, that's really nice through there. Trinity Lake, so I really like that. Those that get a chance to drive that should see. And I think that's what we're trying to do on our Forest Service roads and the other roads within our timber sales.
Thank you, Terry. Anybody else? Who else have thoughts on this? So let me, I'm wondering, so when I did first get involved in the collaborative, I guess that was actually 2015. I recollect that we were, the forestry committee was meeting regularly and in a larger setting than the fuel break work group. And I'm wondering if a more detailed discussion and kind of roundtable talk about with the agencies and interested members of the collaborative in the context of the forestry committee before we meet again in July would be useful. Larry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm up for that, but what I would want to qualify it as is in the field. In the field, looking at what we're talking about.
Yeah, I think that sounds, yeah, because it's hard to, it's hard to visualize, especially in a Zoom setting. So maybe Kelly and I will, if the Forest Service thinks that's doable, maybe sometime in June, you know, we can begin to float out some field trip discussion of the forestry committee meeting and, and see where we can take this, trying to recalibrate some of our, our goals. And I got a chat message from Ted saying, sounds good. So we'll kind of go with that and see where it takes us. But, you know, the thing to remember is that, you know, it, it takes participation. So if you've got an interest in it, you know, we'll, we really need to have you there looking at the, everybody looking at the same chunk of ground at the same time. And I want to thank Larry and Joseph for bringing the topic up and it's probably a good opportunity. We've got some big stuff. And it's probably a good opportunity. We've got some big stuff ahead of us, you know, project-wise on the Forest Service ground. Um, it's a good time to kind of take that effort. So if there's nothing else on that topic.
Hey, Pat?
Yes?
Yeah, this is Nick. Hey, I wanted to ask a question now. Is this, is the topic really just about the nature of fuel treatments associated with whatever it is that's happening out there on the landscape? Or are we, you know, also try to have a conversation about sort of landscape design? So the nature of the fuel breaks we're proposing and implementing, the strategically placed thinning sort of strategies, post-fire management sort of strategy? I mean, are we talking about landscape design, fuel treatment design as well as fuel treatment, um, logistics, timing and kind of implementation? Or are we just talking about fuels treatments implementation?
I asked the group, what do you think? Larry, Joseph, others?
Well, speaking for myself, I'm up for talking about fuel treatments of all kinds. But specifically, like I said, what brought this to mind was our beloved project of First Forty-Eight and watching what happened to it when the timing of the fuels treatment was too late. And, and as Joseph pointed out, the Westside, uh, Plantation Project, which was right next door to me, that also burned up because they didn't clean up enough of the fuels. So, uh, yeah, we can talk about fuel treatment across the landscape. I don't want to get the topic spread out so far that we lose sight of our immediate problem, but I'm up for talking about all of it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I asked just because, you know, if our starting assumption is that our fuel treatments, if we just treated the slash are going to be effective in the face of the August complex on its highest intensity burn days, then we may not be talking about the right set of issues. And so I think we need to have kind of joint conversation about sort of broadly the adequacy of our fuel treatments based upon the kind of fire they're going to face and their uses, you know, uh, in terms of for, for firing operations and, and anchoring and such. And then also a conversation about, you know, the, the sort of site-specific fuel treatment issues. So I just encourage us to talk about both.
I think that's fair game. Um, Nick. Um, you know, and I think, you know, in, in the context of projects that are imminently going to be done, you know, dealing with those immediate logistical issues, but taking the big, you know, kind of the 10,000-foot view also is important. Are we doing the right thing in the right place? So, okay. So with that, Nick, you're next up. You talk about landscapes, technical stuff. Uh, the next topic is Trinity Headwaters Project at the Watershed Center is, um, percolating through their system. So Nick, um, take it away. And I'm, if you, I'm, I'm sure you can do shared screen if you've got a slideshow.
Yeah, I'm going to share a screen. Um, do you, how much time do, do we have here, Pat? I think there's 15 minutes on the agenda, but things-
Yeah, you got, you, you've got maybe, uh, a little bit more than that because we don't have the barred owl, spotted owl, but we want to have that extra time shared between your presentation and the Standing Wave Project.
Great. Okay. Folks can see the slides here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for making the time for this, uh, project I'm excited about and, and, uh, hope a lot of you will, will, uh, also want to pitch into Trinity Headwaters, uh, excuse me. So we're talking about the, we're talking about the Upper Trinity River landscape, uh, that flows into Trinity Lake. And, and in particular here, um, I'll be focusing on sort of the northeast corner of the county, kind of 10% of that Upper Trinity, uh, watershed. And so just in context here, you know, the collaborative group hasn't done a lot of work, uh, to date, focusing around the area above Trinity Lake. Um, it's landscape many you do know well though, and there are some limited projects going on on National Forest System land on, uh, uh, above the lake. And there's obviously a lot of private timberland up there and private land management that goes on. Um, about five years ago now, the State of California through Assembly Bill 2551 basically declared all of these headwater forests at the top of the state. So the Upper Trinity, the Sacramento, McLeod, Feather River watershed, uh, Pitt River watershed, essentially critical infrastructure for the state of California's water system. And so they prioritized good management, stewardship of these forested watersheds for water resources as, uh, part of the state's critical infrastructure for water delivery. What that has done is sort of elevated the importance of these forests within kind of state prioritization schemes, meaning there's funding for implementing active forest management in these watersheds at scales, you know, greater than, than what we're currently operating at. Again, folks, I'm not going to dwell on any of this. You know, folks know the Upper Trinity River watershed fairly well. This is a photo from the Upper Trinity River watershed analysis that the RCD did, uh, many years ago now. Just gives you the, uh, lay of the land. Essentially, you've got this, the wilderness area, of course, to the west. And then checkerboard, essentially ownership prevailing across much of the rest of the ownership. Uh, and we've got three, you know, distinct communities, Trinity County communities at risk from fire that, uh, that sit up there in, in the Upper Trinity watershed. Lot of values at risk. We all know those well. We've all seen them diminished, uh, by fire in our time here. And I think the driving sort of impetus for, for the watershed center getting interested in doing work, uh, and in this project in particular is just this, I think, sort of glaring reality that, you know, we're really not managing at a scope and scale that, that is actually getting to resilience. So to the points that Joseph was just making or that Larry is making, you know, that, that's true across the entirety of, of Trinity County landscape, right? We're not, we're not managing fuels at a, at a scale and in a way that's actually mitigating the fire risk. Of course, in this watershed, there are sort of specific distinct challenges. The checkerboard creates this sort of discontinuity of land management that makes sort of landscape-scale fire management really challenging. Of course, on the private parcels, timber optimization is the primary goal. And then on the federal side, you know, there's just limitations and we know them all well. You know, essentially the, the federal estate is, um, in many ways too large and sprawling and complex to manage. We're all working together on that, you know, through the collaborative group. Uh, but it doesn't, it doesn't sort of, we're not getting to scale. So, project vision for Trinity Headwaters. Um, this, now, now we're zone, we're honing in a little bit. So this map is zoomed, zoomed in and you're looking at, in the center of this map, the project area that I'm calling, that the Watershed Center is calling Trinity Headwaters. It is 11,000 acres of private timberland. It's owned by Michigan California Timber Company. Before that, it was owned by Sierra Pacific Industries for a brief period and, and was originally created as private land as part of the railroad land grants. So Southern Pacific, uh, Land Company, some Southern Pacific Railroad Land Company owned and operated this land for many years before the current owners. So the goal of the project here, you know, essentially right now, Michigan California Timber Company has harvested a lot of the merchantable timber that's sort of available for, you know, essentially several decades now. It's pretty degraded as a timberland asset. Um, they are interested in divesting of that as a timber asset. Doesn't provide them a lot of value into the future. Um, there are a handful of different ways that could go. Essentially what we've seen already in this landscape is, uh, land transactions that move that into federal ownership. Uh, you can see next to this, some pink parcels that Sierra Pacific Industries is working on divesting and, and going into federal ownership. Um, essentially, you know, my interest, the Watershed Center's interest was that, uh, we're aware that there's state and federal money for this kind of land conservation to keep land like this actually in private, um, private ownership. Uh, so long as those private landowners are willing to engage in, uh, a permanent working forest conservation easement that basically limits the development value of the property and, and ensures that we'll manage it as a working forest, uh, into the future for both sort of production values, but also for ecological values, um, biodiversity, clean water, clean air, climate resilience. So, you know, what became sort of inspiring to me was the potential that if, if the Watershed Center is a private nonprofit charity, we're able to own that land, work in partnership with the Forest Service in much the ways we do across the landscape now. We could essentially break down some of those barriers that the checkerboard creates, manage more seamlessly at a landscape scale, the watershed, the headwaters of the Trinity River. Um, basically protect all those values we, we care about, particularly sort of water provision. But there's some other unique opportunities in this, in this landscape as well. I'll talk a little more about. So the vision is really purchase the land, put a conservation easement on it that ensures its long-term protection, uh, develop a master plan, land management plan in partnership with the community and stakeholders. And then work in simultaneously with the Forest Service to put the rest of that landscape, the rest of the checkerboard into stewardship agreement so that then we can look at, instead of 11,000 acres of private land and 15,000 acres of public land, we can look at a 30,000 acre watershed where we're managing, uh, as, as one land ownership and where we can really scale up for landscape-scale fuels management, um, silviculture that actually lines up across property boundaries, larger scale prescribed fire, basically forest and fire resilience, restore meadows. So, little more of a zoom in and, and a, this is a Google Earth imagery of the watershed. Uh, you can sort of get a sense of the checkerboard just by the nature of the sort of clear-cut pattern on the landscape. For folks who don't know the geography or who are aware of the geography, we're essentially talking about at the bottom of Scott Mountain on Highway Three, there's a road to the right that heads off towards Siskiyou County, the Eddies. It's known locally as the IP Road or Stewart Springs Road. Uh, you can see the Trinity River headwaters, essentially the Upper Trinity River running kind of right through the gut of this property. And, and so the 11,000 acres basically border on both sides of the watershed as you head up the IP Road, um, every other section. I think the water, the water sort of source protection is the core kind of hook to why do this? You know, essentially if we manage fuels at scales, if we manage to restore degraded meadows, we can basically protect, you know, essentially water provision out of the watershed, uh, in the long term. There's some really cool kind of recreational opportunities up here as well that, uh, you know, some of which are fairly kind of narrow and niche, but I think could, could really bring some interest into the county. Uh, this is one of the few places where you can get to, um, sort of snowmobiling and, and sort of winter recreation access without having to travel through the wilderness because it's all non-wilderness. So the Eddies, real popular winter recreation area from the Mount Shasta side. Number of folks from the Trinity side also use this area. Uh, there's a little 40-acre parcel as part of this Trinity Headwaters project that has an old, uh, cabin from the twenties on it and has, um, amazing access to basically both winter recreation and summer recreation. There's a trail, the, the, um, it's called the Siskiyou Callahan Trail or the Siskow Trail that, uh, runs over to Mount Shasta. That's actually, uh, allows for bicycles, doesn't run through any wilderness. And so mountain biking is getting real popular, kind of coming over from the other side of the mountain. So there's, there's some neat opportunities. There's a couple of lakes on the property. Um, there's sort of shared access to, to some of the, uh, other lakes that are on federal land, uh, on, in the watershed. So anyway, range, range of kind of opportunities along with just the, the sort of potential for doing active forest management, you know, the jobs that are created through that that have been kind of a core part of what the Watershed Center invests in, um, in our communities over time. So quick, quick update on the status of the project here. Conservation assessment was, so, so a thing I didn't mention very beginning, we're working with an organization called Pacific Forest Trust. They're a west-wide, um, land trust that specializes in basically land conservation with working forest conservation easements. Uh, they were the sponsors of that bill, AB 2551, that named the Trinity Headwaters as critical infrastructure for the state. They're essentially leading the efforts to help put this whole sort of funding package together that would eventually give, give the land to the Watershed Center. Conservation assessment is their first step, basically describes the conservation values. That's how we essentially market the public investment in the conservation easement. We have to sort of prove out that there's enough conservation value to justify a public investment. They finished that in April 2021. That's something I can share with you all to the extent you're interested. They secured a three-year option on the property with the current landowner. So the current landowner is a willing seller and is basically looking to divest in this land. We have a three-year option to purchase the property, uh, now secured. So we've got three years essentially to put the financing together. Engaging and rolling key partners and stakeholders. We've been having conversations with, with, uh, stakeholders, started working with the Public Utility District Board last year. Gave some presentations to the Forest Service, to Weaverville Rotary, to sort of some, some limited interested stakeholders. But we'll be really ramping up, um, the sort of engagement strategy now that we, we have the option and, and the project is sort of moving ahead in earnest. There's a lot of money being invested in the State of California and fire resilience, including in land conservation. Uh, folks might've heard the 30 by 30 initiative, federal initiative to conserve 30% of lands and waters by 2030. Uh, so there's both federal money and state money that's flowing into this kind of work. And so, you know, real potential to actually fund this project and, and make this happen in the next couple of years. And so where we're at in terms of the sort of the deep work Watershed Center needs to do with Pacific Forest Trust and stakeholders over the coming couple of years, really develop the terms of the easement. The easement basically dictates what the land management can look like over time, uh, to man, to maintain those conservation interests. And then, uh, we, we really need to work with, work with our staff and with stakeholders to develop management strategy for, for the landscape, uh, that'll, that'll align with the terms of the easement, align with all these public values that we want to protect and enhance through the management of the property. Um, and then of course, work with Forest Service, hopefully to build towards really like a larger landscape vision for the Headwaters area. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Nick. Questions for Nick?
Carol has one.
Um, hey, Nick. So how does this integrate with the, um, purchase of the lands along the Pacific Crest Trail? You know, that we've talked about previously?
Yeah. So, so, you know, Michigan California Timber Company, you know, working with the Pacific Crest Trail Association already divested of their lands on the, on the crest. So this is the sort of other half of what they owned in Trinity County. Um, so for them, this is kind of just a natural progression of divesting of, of a bunch of land in the county. Now, so Sierra Pacific Industries working with the Forest Service now on, uh, divesting of several sections, some of them adjacent to what, uh, MichCal, uh, did and, and some of them not. But, uh, some, but being adjacent to the Trinity Alps Wilderness. Um, I think of these as really complimentary, you know, efforts. The Forest Service is aggregating land that I think is, um, pretty logical for them to aggregate under ownership. It's not very productive commercial timberland. There's not going to be a future sort of timberland, um, investment-oriented owner of that property. So good to see it go into, you know, I think, public ownership. I think, yeah, this, I, I just see it as all complimentary kind of conservation strat, landscape conservation strategy for the, for the Upper Trinity. That's how I think of this.
Yeah. So it seems like a, a good blend. Um, hopefully, you know, the Forest Service would kind of, you know, make sure that that happens. Um, so just something to think about. You know, the IP Road, if you're talking about doing a lot of work up there, you're going to need to do, find some funding to do a lot of work on that road because it's a pretty sketchy road, uh, from the Trinity side, from the Shasta side. It's, it's great coming up there, but we want to be able to get people going from Trinity up to the Divide. So just something to think about.
Yeah, that's great. You're absolutely right about that, Carol.
Anybody else? Anyone else have any thoughts or comments?
Yeah, Pat, this is Keith Greenwood. Um, I just wanted to-
Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that, uh, as far as SB's involvement in the, um, the desire of some to acquire property, um, we've been, uh, a will- the desire of some to acquire property, we've been a willing listener and we've discussed with our ownership some, and there's even some level of agreement upon some transfer of ownership, but the word divestment is not something we're looking at. We're not looking to divest or as foresters, maybe we are a little heroic in our thinking that we can manage any piece of property. And so we think we've got a strategy for managing that ground and we'll continue to invest in it. So that it not only protects the value, some of the ones you've talked about, including recreational values and resiliency, but I continue to grow and and have commercial products. So for us, we think we can continue to manage that ground, but when somebody comes to us has significant funding that out paces the ability of the ground to produce, that's where some of those other values that others might place on it allow us to, as, as the ownership makes that decision, they can allow that property to go to other hands.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Keith, and sorry to mischaracterize that. That's, that's, I did not intend to sort of suggest motive in that. So, yeah, I appreciate that.
No, no, I understand. I just, like I said, we like to be heroes as foresters. We think we can grow trees on rocks. And so a lot of that, some of that up there is rocks.
Rocky.
So John Knight raised his hand.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm wondering if this, do you know, would this land remain under timber production zone?
Yeah, it would.
Okay, that's, that's good because that's been one of my concerns that with the MichCal sale is the county is losing timber production zone land. I you know, I think we should be swapping land with the Forest Service so that we can acquire, we or the private timber companies can acquire land that they're not managing. You know, for the timber value when that's probably its, its primary best use. But if you're keeping this in TPZ, I guess that, that's a step in the right direction. I just don't think we should support any net loss of TPZ land in the county.
Yeah, I could speak a little more to that just quick, John, because I think that's, that's really important point. And I think it's one of the upsides of sort of local conservation ownership is that it stays private, stays in the tax base. It's going to stay in timber production zone, sort of working for it. The working forest piece of it is actually like a mandate that comes with the easement. Like you actually have to manage it for those values over time, along with the conservation values. And so there'll be timber tax, you know, accrual over time, as well as just sort of annual property taxes, the one sort of big which ultimately becomes a pretty small difference, but basically the, the conservation easement reduces the value of the property, the appraised value of the property. So it reduces the tax, the annual tax contribution.
Thank you, Nick. So Carrie Sheen and then I think Joseph.
Yes, I, I laid out all the roads for that whole area and had first logging on it and left a lot of trees to have it grow where we could selectively take them out when they start to salvage log or turn needles turn. So, yeah, it's a great productive area, beautiful area. I put roads to all the lakes that were on the private sides because it's shouldn't be, handicapped people should be able to get up to those lakes and Slide Lake and Bowl Lake and and Picune Lake and be able to enjoy what we that can hike in can do and drive the roads are gated right now. But yeah, it's a beautiful area up there. It's real rocky, but it grows timber and it takes, takes a long time and keep it in timber production. And when the trees die, we had Dick Hamilton, when he was alive, doing all of our salvage logging, tree dies and he'd go up and get that one big sugar pine or big ponderosa pine that's there. It's not much dug fur in there, some cedar, a lot of cedar and poor dorford cedar, a lot of poor dorford cedar in the creeks. So it's a unique spot and yeah, keep the timber. When trees die, we should be able to salvage log and have a person go in there and clean up our forest for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Joseph, did you have something?
No, no, I don't.
Okay. Well, I think we need to move on. Nick, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm visualizing a field trip for the group.
Yeah, I'd love to go up there.
It's not burned up.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
So thank you again, Nick, and keep us posted as things develop. So next up is Jeremy Brown, and he had a request last meeting to talk to us about a different kind of project, a little bit wetter terrain, standing waves in the Trinity River. So I'm going to turn this over to Jeremy, who can share screen.
All right, cool. I'm sharing the screen now. Is it working?
Looks like your phone.
It's working, all right. Is that, can you see that?
Yes. Yep, there it comes.
All right, cool. All right. So, yeah, I'm on now satellite internet, so there might be slight delay or whatever, but um
Could you turn your phone landscape? It will just make the, the image larger. There we go.
All right. So, Standing Waves, they are typically installed features along rivers. They've been getting more attention over the recent years nationwide on the West Coast and internationally. They're diverse in providing economics, education, youth, recreation, and also restoration and fish habitat. I'm going to skip the video just due to limited time. There'll be a video at the end. But there are a number of projects, especially in Colorado. But in California, I believe the only one's in Auburn. And we kind of just pull the, the Water Quality Control Act supports, you know, recreation as one of its aspects, and that can be useful as far as finding funding related to these projects. The waves are diverse in their, their user groups. I think you can even boogie board them. Boogie boarders are not listed on here, but people can do the stand-up paddle boarding, traditional hard shell kayak, inflatable kayaks, and also surfboards or also riverboards. A lot of these projects also attract a lot of visitors just for viewing the activities and watching. So these are some of the projects that have happened in different locations. Like I said, a lot are in Colorado. But there, the user days are representing how many, how many people are going out there throughout the days. And then the, the spending to the community is based on, you know, if that many visitors are coming to the area, what else are they doing while they're in the area, things like that. So locally, I had discussed with some avid river kayakers and I'm not much of a kayaker. I've rapt it a little bit, but I'm not a, a passionate kayaker. Although I do appreciate the international recognition that the Trinity River does have for whitewater enthusiasts. There's a wide range of everything from class one to class five plus. So Lewiston is an area that in theory could host a whitewater park or standing wave. That is a picture of the Lewiston Dam there in the background. That's a semi-existing standing wave there due to the obstruction in the river. So the, the waves themselves can be slapboard or rocks or cement or combinations of all of them. So in Big Flat, we looked at this area also, and when I say we, it's just really me and a couple of friends. You need about two feet of fall to generate a wave. And the waves can be in anywhere from two hundred CFS up to, I think, I believe, three thousand CFS. So it kind of falls within the Trinity's flow range. Big Flat is probably the best ideal first location for, for a feature like this to go. Mostly due to the, the rafting companies are already in Big Flat. You have the Big Flat Access Area. And the, the features there are really nice of the river. And this just outlines some of the features that are on that stretch of kayaking. There used to be a, I guess, a kayak competition held in Big Flat every year, maybe in the nineties into the early two thousands. And they had a slalom race. I don't know if they did freestyle as well, but Junction City also has a potential location. And what's nice about Junction City is that with the, I believe it's the Cooper's Creek or Cooper's Bar Restoration Program, some of that environmental analysis for the TRP program would include the analysis required for a wave installation. And so to be able to work along with TRP on these projects could be very beneficial and, and show the diversity that not only the Restoration Program can bring to the local community, but also these standing waves. Let's see, so some of the, you know, additional considerations is is the two ninety-nine corridor, you know, is already an attraction for whitewater enthusiasts. So this is really enhancing it and adding another level for different user groups and more frequent user groups from a wider range of destinations from around the world. A lot of the river parks that have gone in, I think I'll get to that on the next slide here. This is the top of the Burnt Ranch Gorge, which is in Burnt Ranch and has class five plus. A lot of people, you know, this is a whitewater class that people have died on. And they have a small competition every year here, but it's very small. And I think it's just more a group of friends that know each other. So this is in Bend, Oregon, and I believe they have four or five features here in a row. You can kind of see the main ones here and in the background they trail down. So a lot of the users will wait along the sides of the river. And then when they kind of cycle through when it's their turn and they, they co-use it with a lot of the floats and also the people that are riding the waves for five minutes or whatever the time duration is. This is the one in Reno. And this one, I believe, is more, a little bit closer proximity to downtown. I think it's on the Truckee River, if I'm not mistaken. And you can see the feature there in the background, you know, it, it looks naturalized, but it's actually designed and developed to accommodate the flow and, and utilizing the existing features as well as the, the other features they'll add into it, whether or not it's masonry or, or natural rock. So this is in Golden, Colorado. And this, sorry for the format here, this is the Auburn one in California. And this was at a dam removal. And so it was noted during the Recreation Committee meeting that, that material in the middle of the river and along the side is all cemented in. And that's due to the design and also they reclaimed a lot of the materials when they took down this dam that was there. So it was part of the intention to reclaim the materials and I guess they were able to crush and reuse some of it. So the standing wave features are right there on the right side of the, the river and then on the left side is a fish passage. This is in Colorado as well. You can see the stand-up paddle border there and people just wait on the side to get their turn or just watch for fun. And another one in Colorado. Again, Colorado. Colorado definitely has, you know, a lot going on, but California has, I think, equal potential as, as Colorado. I want to get to the video part here so you guys can see what the, I don't know if it's going to work, unfortunately. Shoot. Well, that's unfortunate. So hold on a second. So some of the neat things with the standing wave, these projects can be entirely funded by grants and I've actually already located a first pocket of money that would facilitate the feasibility and potential design of one of these parks. And it's a significant amount of money. So some of these installations, you know, can be just a feature. Some of them can be four or five features in a row along with like a riverside walkway and it can really enhance the community. So I've kind of identified it as one of the, the things that I think would be beneficial to the community. And Mike Dixon from the Restoration Program, he was very supportive of this and didn't see anything concerning of it as far as fisheries go. A lot of the designers that do these installations are ecologically designed and sound and, and we'll even say that it provides more fish habitat with the features. It gives the year-round recreation opportunity for the river enthusiasts. And with both the state and federal wild and scenic designation on the river, it has double pockets of money for these projects. So, you know, the kind of the, the big dream would be to see the standing wave features develop along the whole two ninety-nine corridor, not just in Big Flat or just in Lewiston, but to have a whole series of them. And, you know, theoretically become an international destination for year-round river users and sprinkling it through the communities and maybe having a Humboldt or one of the tribes also take initiative and doing these installations. I believe last year, the whitewater companies during the COVID summer had over six thousand users between the three companies. So I thought that was pretty significant already. And to be able to increase that would be really valuable. I'm really sorry that video didn't work, Kelly, because some people still might not have the concept of what the standing wave is. So maybe I can email a link to the video or a few videos and then that could be circulated for collaborative members that had interest. But I mean, if you YouTube standing wave parks and whitewater standing wave parks, stuff like that, you'll see them all up there. And one of the most recent installations was in Austria, in a very rural area, pretty much in the middle of nowhere. And I believe in their first six months of being open, they had, I think, ten thousand visitors come and visit the standing wave. So I believe there's tremendous, tremendous amount of potential, the whitewater industry is ever-expanding and that includes the funding opportunities for it. I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Great. So does anybody have questions or comments for Jeremy or the group as a whole?
Yeah, Jeremy, how can we help?
Actually, the, I might be requesting any letters of support here in the next couple of weeks. The grant opportunity is actually like in the next week or two. So I'm meeting with Suzie at County to see if she feels that it's an appropriate fit and the location fills the, the definition of the, the project. But, you know, these projects can range from anywhere from a couple million dollars and up. The design group that I've kind of spoke with as while trying to research McLaughlin Whitewater, I'll, I'll add a link to their webpage in the email that will be circulated because they've done a number of, I think, at least, I don't know, twenty installations around the world and a number of them all deal with restoration efforts included with this. And one of their most recent ones was in an old mill town of about, I think, six thousand people. And it was this old mill area that weren't using the site at all. And they've made it into a vibrant park that everyone loves to visit and they'll watch the waves, they'll have competitions. I think it's a really amazing opportunity and, and utilizing our natural existing features and grant money to enhance our, our economic viability is, is a win-win in my opinion.
Okay, so Jerry.
Jeremy, I'm just wondering who, who's funding the assessments and the installations in general? What kind of organizations are putting money into it?
Initially, it'd be all grant funded. And then if it were able to get to like a phase two of like a post-feasibility and design, I believe at that point we'd still be able to find grant, but the grant money I found is five, up to five million dollars. we'd still be able to find grant, but the grant money I found is five, up to five million dollars. And so, like I said.
I'm wondering, who who's the grantor? What what kind, who's granting, who's putting the money out?
Oh, there's a state wa- water board resources. Um, there's a few state programs and then there's also federal programs due to the the wild scenic designation, I believe. And so, yeah, it's state water board and um I believe also Fish and Game has money for it. There's numerous grants. So I sent a list of the the grants to our grants writer in the county and she said about two or three of them were viable. And one of them is this big federal thirty million dollars that will go to twenty projects across the country. And and some of the requirements are to be rural and disadvantaged community. And so we really hit a lot of the marks. So um, yeah, this first grant for just the development of the project is up to uh anywhere from thirty thousand to five million for one awardee. So essentially, all of the costs for feasibility um can be included just with this one initial grant. So I'm pretty excited about it.
Thank you.
Hey Jeremy, I got, I do have a video pulled up just to give a real quick sample of what this would look like.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is pretty crude.
Do you know where this one is? Calvin? Oh, Denver, okay. So uh, I thought, Jeremy, just as you're sitting down to meet with Suzie, um, you know, one of the things oftentimes, you know, is is what's important is who is the applicant? So um if it looks like the county isn't the best fit for the the to be the applicant for the grants, think about some of the partners here, the Watershed Center, the RCD, if they they make a better match or is it the Trinity River Program? But anyway, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, that's um, you know, I I'd be open to suggestion. I've never actually, you know, initiated a grant-funded project uh process before. So um, because I think Forest Service has money. Um, because if it wasn't Big Flat, I believe that's Forest Service. It might be BLM or BLM might be at the top of that area. But um, both uh BLM and Forest Service did not seem opposed to the project in the last presentation. So that was kind of um, that that was good. Um, as far as an entity taking it on, um, yeah, like I said, I'd be open to suggestion. I don't know, you know, as far as uh recreation and natural resource goes, that sounds like that would be RCD, maybe? I don't know.
Right, I think, w- once, once you and Suzie meet, you'll you'll have a better feel for what they're looking for for applicants.
Okay.
So anybody else, anything that?
Yeah, this is Keith with Sierra Pacific. Um, I, you know, maybe it's just the picture I saw that Kelly pulled up, but wow, it looks quite unnatural. Um, and I I often wonder, you know, a lot of times we have good intentions on modifications to river uh systems and we don't think it'll have an effect, but it tends to, including the increased demands for flow, you know, you got an event or something. We need to increase the flows to this or that. And um, and if you put it between two dams, I I can see where you might say it's uh minor in effect. But um, it seems like everything we do um that's unnatural, um, we're not allowed to do these days that we maybe used to do with the Army Corps of Engineers in the past. But now we're doing it and willing to do it for recreation and that that troubles me.
Okay, and Bob Morris?
I'll get a phone call, sorry. Um, I what didn't intend to speak, but I've only visited one of these. It was in the Truckee River, just on the inside the city limits of Reno. And can you hear me?
Yeah.
It looked very, very different from what you just showed on the screen. It basically didn't show at all. They were inflatable cushions within the river channel that were adjustable for flow. So you could create uh different classes of uh river features. And it attracted a lot of people. There were concrete walkways uh outside the floodplain uh adjacent to it with lots of spectators, drew a lot of uh tourists. And I was awed by it. That was probably two thousand and four or so, so quite a while ago. But it literally didn't show the features where the crea- created the wave were underwater and adjustable for flow. I was very impressed with it.
So um, Jeremy, any thoughts on either Bob or Keith?
Um, yeah, I mean, these, the designs are, you know, as diverse as diversity itself. So it's not like a one-size-fits-all. They're all site-specific. Uh, there, I think they're also, you know, designed per the, what the community is looking for. It's not like it's sold to a a private company that comes in and profiteers off of it or anything like that. Um, like I said, a lot of the projects that have been done across the country are um collaborated with a restoration effort. So um, you know, I guess there can be interpretations on science and things like that. But I've yet to hear of a negative impact um for many of these features. A lot of them, even without the, you know, a lot of them can handle these flexible flows. Like I said, two hundred CFS up to, I believe, three thousand. Um, the inflated bag is one of many types of installations, uh installation methods they have. So um, yeah, I encourage people to go out there and do their own, you know, uh, look into it on their own and and check it out. Um, the Auburn Dam one is is a a good example of one. Like I said, they only need about two feet of fall uh to be created. And um in my initial discussions with Big Flat uh rafting companies, they were all very curious and supportive of it too. I inquired about the Lewiston potential and and I was told that the community probably would not be as supportive of it in Lewiston. So um I figured I would focus energy somewhere else where there was a full community support for it. Um, and with the Restoration Program being supportive of it, uh, I guess my next steps would be to check in with the with the tribes or with the Trinity Management Council and make sure there there wasn't any um resistance or hesitations and allow for technical questions to be answered. Um, so, you know. Yeah, I definitely think that all all the aspects should be taken into consideration. But um personally, I feel like it's a pretty sound method and and doesn't, you know, pulling millions of dollars into the community from grant pockets in a new avenue that we haven't explored before is um, I think it's worth looking into and and still, yeah, of course, allowing for the public process to engage with their concerns.
Great. Carol has a question or comment.
So I think, you know, I'm not sure who owns the um land along the side of um, you know, sites in Big Flat. But if it is Forest Service land, you'd want to make sure you talk to the Forest Service pretty early on about, you know, their concerns and, you know, getting some sort of environmental documentation. Because you're gonna have to have some sort of NEPA approval if you want to put like the the walkways and and access points on Forest Service property to get to a standing wave. So, it's a thought.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Okay, so if nothing else, Jeremy, thank you very much. Keep us posted.
All right, thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, so we're still on schedule and um the next uh uh item, next two items are Forest Service projects, the August Fire uh kind of update, and then the pilot project. And I'm not sure who for the August Fire is taking the lead. Is that you, Ted?
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick.
Ted, formerly from the Chastity Trinity National Forest back at the Six Rivers.
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
All right, so I just, you know, it's been a little while since we've we've uh revisited this holistically. So so we put a map together between the two forests just to kind of show everything that that's in the works right now. So I'm gonna bring that up if I can make this work. And it it is gonna be hard to see, uh, I admit that. Um, and I'll be sure to uh uh send this out. Um, should I send it to uh you, Pat, or to Kelly? Um, let me see, which? Am I sharing my email or am I sharing the map?
We see the map.
Okay, excellent. Um, so uh, I'll just, I'll just speak to it uh generally. Um, so so folks can can get a sense of what's going on. Um, and then open it up to questions. I know we don't have a ton of time and want to leave some time for uh Chris to talk about the the pilot project. But um, so looking at the north side of the map, uh, north of the map, you see the the darker green. I don't know if you can see my cursor. Um, those are the the phase one units that the Chastity Trinity is working on in in uh currently. And there's some right here and then there's some down over here. These are all um focused on high severity hazard abatement. Um, uh, mostly around uh roadways and and kind of breaking up that 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 fuel continuity. Um, and uh the the focus of that is is uh removal, removal of fuels and a stab and and reforestation. Those are kind of the 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 main two focuses of that project. And and um uh there there's been some community meetings and and um, you know, some uh the the draft. I'm, I I've been away for three weeks, so I can't be exactly up to date on it. But but anyway, that that's just kind of the area of focus. And then this uh blue area here, purple area, depending on what uh what um uh uh map you're looking at or what you, how it displays on your computers, is the phase two. So that's kind of the the early initial, uh, the first two projects out of the gate. Both of these projects are are scheduled to be, you know, planned. Um, NEPA decision signed, a a a phase one here, you know, in the next couple of months and phase two is 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 not gonna be that far behind it. Um, and then uh, you know, jumping over to the Six River side. Now, I'll I'll open it up for questions here in a minute, but just kind of general overview so you see what's going on. Our, our, we have um the Three Forks project uh that um is uh down here. Um, and that that decision has has already been signed. Um, and implementation will will likely be starting uh here in the next week or so. Um, and that is, that is really, it it's the the Three Forks and the um kind of the broader uh uh Restoration Environmental Assessment that the Six Rivers is 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 doing are are really just updating the planning for from existing projects to do the shaded fuel break or cleaning up of the fuels if it's all high severity. Um, and some reforestation work uh related to the August complex. So you'll see a- a- all of these are kind of oriented around road systems and ridge tops. Uh, the 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 um purple are the shaded fuel breaks. Um, there's some yellow in there that I can't see very well on my map. So you'd have to zoom in when we send it out. That shows kind of the the roadside hazard with the county road systems. And then there's also some oak uh woodland restoration work that we're gonna be doing um as part of the uh environmental assessment uh that that's also planning on decision date uh with the EA. Um, you know, late August, um Sep- beginning of September uh is our goal. Um, and then the other project, I just wanted to make sure that that you're aware of, that that we're working on is the South Fork Mountain Shaded Fuel Break. Um, th- there is gonna be a little more width to it, but it's it's it's, you know, this whole system here. And that's kind of the next one in the hopper uh for both forests to work on together. Um, uh, you know, probably starting uh this late summer, early fall to get the the planning effort underway on that one. Um, and in that one, uh, the the other projects are kind of underway and and fully funded. The South Fork Mountain one, we have some money set aside in in agreements for it, but we're asking for more money. Uh, there's a, there's a current ask for some some high priority projects. And and the Chastity and the the Six Rivers have jointly requested about a million dollars for for additional funding to do uh the, to finish up the planning and the implementation. And again, this is, this is work we want to do, you know, coordinating third party with both NCRC, um, you know, RCD, the Watershed Center, you know, all all of our different partners in the area to come together and work on this together and and the guiding document on that South Fork Mountain one in particular is gonna be the 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 fire kill, the fuel break. That's kind of what we're gonna use as our inspiration for for developing that project. Um, and and so, and then the the third thing I wanted to kind of kind of touch on is in addition to these projects that are discrete, um, projects that have 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 discrete boundaries, we're we're still working on the uh forest-wide fire and fuel programmatic where we're looking at twelve inches and less uh mechanical treatment and then, you know, uh prescribed burning across the entire forest. And that that environmental assessment to cover the entire Six Rivers um is is slated to be done, uh, you know, ready for signature in in the fall. And that gets to some of these discussions, you know, you're having earlier today about uh, how how do we get to those 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 smaller, finer fuels? How do we get better at treating those? Um, and and so between all these different projects, we're looking at the shaded fuel breaks, opening up more areas for for prescribed uh understory burning and and doing some of those uh mechanical treatments. Um, uh, the uh the twelve inches and less. Uh, just just taking away one of the obstacles of getting the 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 planning, the NEPA side of things done. So we can focus more on 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 the implementation and 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 getting funding to do the work um and focus on on the the strategic areas that need need some attention. So, I know that was a lot and a little bit, uh, but I I did want to provide a little opportunity of of um folks to see the bigger picture of all the different efforts that are going on right now and and just see if you had any questions about kind of where we're at and 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 what the next steps are. Uh, you know, short term and and, you know, longer term.
Great, thank you, Ted. So questions, comments for Ted and and the Forest Service?
Uh, this is Keith with Sierra Pacific. Pat, can I address?
Yeah, go for it.
So Ted, I've been driving on the Wild Mad Road, uh, looking at our property. And and I noticed a lot of the units laid out are on the uh high severity south aspect, but also very small ponderosa pine. And by the time the sale goes, gets uh advertised, and I don't really know the process, but I'm afraid uh there's gonna be no value. Um, and it's gonna be very hard to get that work done. Um, and and I don't know how to direct you there, but if you just know when the likelihood of the work being able to get done is gonna take place, then it'll give you an idea of, is this just a piling clearing project? Or is it one where you're actually gonna be able to uh have contractors uh willing to commit to to doing that work for you?
Yeah, I think that's a great question, Keith, and and it's it's a mixed bag. Um, so we're we're looking at areas that that need treatment um and recognizing that the the longer it takes us to get the planning done and before we can, we can put things out to contract. So some things are not gonna be commercially viable and we're gonna have to do more of a stewardship approach and and find funding to get that work done. And then some of the stuff is is gonna have um some economic value to help help pay for the the getting the material, you know, the the hazards abated and and out of the woods. So um it it it's it's a little bit of both, Keith, and and um, you know, our goal, so so the the Three Forks is signed. It it's uh, so most of that was stuff that was already under contract. I think there is gonna be some additional area that's gonna go up for bid here soon. It's outside of existing contracts. Um, the EA is both on the Chastity and the Six River side. Uh, we're hoping to have those signed and and uh, you you know, units up for sale late summer, you know, fall at the latest. Um, so hopefully get some operational period this year and then some in the spring. Uh, but you you know, there there's a variety of material that that's out there. Knowing that the pine's gonna lose value quick, uh, there's also some fir out there that that is likely to have some value a little bit longer.
Okay, great, thank you, Ted. Thank you, Keith. Anybody else? And I, don't raise your hand, I can't see everybody because we're still sharing a screen. In case people, whoa.
I can take the map down if folks are done with that. And and like I said, we'll we'll share that with you so so that it can get distributed and folks can kind of get a a closer look at it.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, thank you, Ted. Let's move on. So Chris, are you taking the lead on pilot?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay, take it away, Chris.
Okay. So so we started the we started the draft comment period officially, I believe, on April 19th. Now, what we did was we we sent notices to folks who had commented during the scoping period. But but since there was, there was no unified collaborative letter, it appears that that we didn't get a letter to the collaborative. So I learned that early last week and we worked to remedy that. So last Friday. So first thing I did was I sent Kelly Sheen the information and then with talking with our regional office, I decided to extend the comment period approximately two weeks. And so last Friday on the 14th, we we published a notice to extend the legal notice for draft EA comments. So that's going to expire on Wednesday, June 2nd, which is coincidentally the day that we plan to start the comment period for August complex phase one on the on the Shasta Trinity side. So you'll have a lot of, you'll be able to finish the one and then start the other. But you know, the project that really was designed by this group, the collaborative designed the project, we we did as best we could to to hew closely to the design of the fuel break group with a roadside fuel break and plantation treatments and a fuel break around the plantations. About 4,000 acres of treatment with with that and with prescribed fire. Commercial timber harvest is going to be, is only going to be viable on a few hundred acres, maybe 100 acres or so of that based on our surveys. So the bulk of it will be will be pre-commercial and fuels treatments, but there will be some, there will be a timber, commercial timber component. Anyway, so that just just for those who are kind of, you know, need a little refresh refreshing in their NEPA. So so what this means is that we now have a draft document. That document is is now open review. We encourage you to comment. We would I would really ask that the collab could provide a a letter of support letter to during the comment period, make sure that you get and that'll actually give you standing on the objection process. If we get objected, that actually gets you a seat at the table to to be present during objection discussions or a possibility there. So so I'd recommend that you ask that you do that. And yeah, so finishing the finishing the process. The comment period will end June 2nd, then we'll review the comments. And if there's no major, you know, major need for analysis consideration of of of, you know, options, then we can go ahead soon to issue the draft decision document and the final EA, which then begins the objection period. And the objection period is 45 days, followed by a 45 day objection review period, in this case by the regional forester, because the forest supervisor is the signatory on this decision. So Rachel Burkey will be signing this. And so so yeah, that's 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 the status. I did notice that on on the collaboratives note to Vilsack, to Tom Vilsack, it mentioned that the pilot that the pilot EA hadn't yet gone out for for draft. That's changed. So hopefully you can put in a good word there. But you know, there isn't so kind of big big milestones in that project, but not really a whole discuss on my end. But if you had questions or comments, I'd definitely like to hear them. And maybe there's an opportunity to discuss some some things in the time that we have left.
So
Hi, this is
Go ahead, Joseph.
Chris, I'm reading through the draft EA. I was not able to really determine the width and the extent of the fuels cleanup. It it seems like it it defaults to the forest plan standards and guidelines, but it's nothing is very specific. What do you plan to do along the roadsides in terms of cleanup?
So we would, we would utilize all of the tools in the toolbox. I believe we listed a bunch of them. Those include mastication, pile burning, chipping, you know, piling and pile burning, both with hand piles and machine piles and jackpot burning and even broadcast burning in some locations. That would follow the width of the fuel break, which I believe is 300 feet, except where plantations are present, and then it would extend out to include the plantation and the and and the buffer around that plantation.
Okay, well, so that's very different from your prescription for the Hyam Palm project, which forecast to have fuels producing four foot flame lanes along the road. That's not the prescription you're using for pilot?
They're different. They're different prescriptions. You know, the pilot project was still was pretty well formed when I came on and you know, it was, my understanding was that the design was you know, highly influenced by what this group wanted to see. And so I, you know, took that and kind of finalized the finalized the preliminary analysis, which I think is is pretty close to final. But yeah, the 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 prescription in the pilot project is different from the proposal in Hyam Palm. It is different from the proposal in August phase two. It's kind of highly, I believe, my understanding, because this is before I was here, was highly influenced by this group and wanting that 300 foot buffer area.
Thank you. Okay, so Carol had a question. Listen.
Hello, this is more a general question. Chris has already heard this, but just for the I guess for the rest of the Forest Service. When you publish things in the record searchlight, which I know is the newspaper of record, it's not delivered in Trinity County. It doesn't have a very wide circulation. It would probably, if you're really trying to get people in Trinity County's comments in the future, it would be good to publish it in the Trinity Journal, which is delivered to, you know, everybody. So any just something to think about.
And and maybe as a thought, even not just, you know, legal notices, but just little press releases sometimes, you know, more people read those than the legal notices. This group probably all reads the legal notices. Jerry?
Two points. I did see that the EA was published in this week's Trinity Journal, the notice of it.
Oh, cool. Good.
And then just a clarification on letters of support. I don't think the collaborative actually writes letters of support. We only write letters to board of supervisors to support their action. So we just, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. And that there's a timing, tricky timing issue, Chris, to work through.
So I just wanted to be clear, Chris, that, you know, you probably can't expect a letter directly from the collaborative. It's not the collaborative's role to do that. For better for worse, it's just
From a timing point of view, the next board meeting, I believe, is the 8th of June. So it's after the the comment period closes. If it were the pleasure of this group, we certainly could draft a letter for the board of supervisors. But it would get to you after the after the comment period is over.
Yeah, it's a very cumbersome systems, but that's just the way it is right now.
Comment as individuals and say that we're members of the collaborative and that we worked on this.
Yeah.
Yeah. And and that's, you know, this is just a suggestion, but you know, having having a, you know, if if the collaborative were to comment, it would, it would potentially give them a seat at, you know, objection resolution. That sort of thing. And so it is, you know, the name of the project is Trinity County Collaborative Roads and Plantations Pilot Project. So you know, it's it's certainly helpful to kind of have a to have that since the project was designed with the collaborative in mind. You know, it certainly, I think, would be helpful from my end to have a kind of a single you know, a single set of comments from the from the collaborative. I understand that, you know, that's that may not be doable, but that's that was my pitch.
I have one correction. The actual, the next board meeting is actually on the 2nd of June.
It's on the 2nd of June on a Wednesday?
Yeah, because of the Memorial Day, they pushed off the Tuesday to the to the Wednesday.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. So
Just saying.
We could potentially get a letter done in time. If it were the pleasure of this group.
Well, I would ask Chris, Mike, this Larry Glass, my question would be, will you accept our letter if it's a day late?
A letter? Well, I guess I'm a little confused. You're talking about a letter from the board of supervisors? Or you're talking about a letter from the group? Does?
See, we, the way it works, Chris, is that we have to, we have to vote on it as the collaborative, which we could even do today, probably. But then it has to go to the board of supervisors and be approved by them and then communicated to you. I know.
So, you know, we would, we would welcome and accept all letters, the way that the the way that the comment period works is my understanding is that to get that standing during the comment period, it would have to be received during the comment period, although it could be received until the end of the day on the 2nd as well. So it's not like it has to be received first thing.
It's still, I think it's still doable. I mean, we can work with with Jeremy, you know, Brown, who's the chairman of the board of supervisors to make sure it's on the agenda that it, you know, that if it gets approved by the board of supervisors, he signs it. And it gets, you know, scanned and sent over to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
So Pat, could somebody from your team draft a letter and quickly send it out to the collaborative members for review?
Yeah, reasonably quickly. Jeremy, are you still on the on the call?
He is not on the call.
He's not. So I'm assuming we would, you know, we would need to have the letter in the form that we wanted to be in for the board of supervisors by about Tuesday of next week. So we have something something out to the collaborative to take a quick look at. It would be a fairly generalized letter. And, you know, it would need, it would need quick review by the collaborative members on email. So so anyway, so so it, you know, it's doable. I got to work around some things here at the house, but I could knock something together.
And and thanks for letting me know that. I didn't realize that that that's that you work through the board that way. And so we could certainly, in the future, think about timing in that in that regard. It's already been extended once. I'd hate to extend it a second time.
Yeah, no, I think I think, you know, it's, we can, we can pull it off.
What was the other one?
I mean, you know.
So is there a consensus from the collaborative that we want to do that?
It'd be great to get a motion and a second and an approval. We didn't have it as an action item, but that's kind of a formality.
I would move that we go ahead and approve a letter to support the pilot project that we designed.
A second.
So motion and a second, Larry and Jerry? Any further discussion?
Hey, I just
Yeah, Tom.
Just before we decide that we need to send a letter. I mean, if the if the objective is to, so if there is an appeal that we have standing, I'm not, I mean, what are the risks? I I don't see anybody potentially, I guess, maybe somebody outside, but I don't see anybody jumping in to appeal this proposed project. So to get a have a letter in there just so we can have standing under the risk that an appeal is going to occur, it seems like that's a pretty small risk. Not objecting to sending the letter, just saying that if we can't pull it together, I don't think there's a huge risk there.
Well, Tom, just speaking for myself, that isn't particularly why I made the motion. I'd just like to be on record as supporting the project for the collaborative.
So it's you, you, you don't, you're not anticipating that there's some organization out there that has this in their gun sites or anything?
Well, that's always possible, but so far I've been doing a good job of talking them down.
That's what I'm counting on, Larry.
Okay.
In my experience, we get an objection from Conservation Congress on every vegetation management project where objection's an option. So I I certainly expect that. I don't think that that's any secret. We we get objected. Any, every EA or EIS that I've been involved with since in the last seven years has had an objection from Conservation Congress. So just I don't think that's a secret.
Okay. So Kelly, how do we want to do the vote? Do we want to just have? You're going to do a roll call or?
I can do a, I mean, maybe it would just be easiest if there are any objections to to the to the vote. From the voting members.
From the voting members, anybody opposed to the motion? This is your chance. Going, going, gone. Okay, so it's approved and I got to write a letter this afternoon. Okay. And I'll try to get it, I'm trying to get something out by tomorrow.
Yeah, Pat, I, with that other letter of support for joint use, they specifically expedited it, getting delayed at the CAO office to get it onto the agenda. So we, I think Monday or Tuesday next week would be when we would have to submit it.
Yeah, and I think we probably want to, maybe Kelly, you could send an email to the CAO's office today saying, look for this Monday.
Okay.
Monday or Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay.
Will do.
Okay, Chris, anything else on on the pilot?
Nothing else on on pilot. If I could, if I could put a little plug in for Ted, Ted mentioned his 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 burning project. If I could just put a little plug in that Tuesday, we're doing a district cleanup day and and going to have several dozen folks around the Trinity, the post mountain area cleaning up trash and some of those illegal dump sites. So anyone is invited and let us know and show up at 9:30 at Four Corners and we'll we'll sign you up as a volunteer. And you can pick trash. If you got a pickup truck, even better. So just wanted to share that.
Chris, did you have any luck with the county with regards to the dump dump fee waiver?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for prompting me. Yes, we got a unanimous vote on that. And so if folks come and they want to pick up a load of, pick up a load of trash, they can take it to the Hayfork or Weaverville dump and we will arrange that the dump, that there will be no charge. We can, we can do a little sleight of hand and make sure that you're not charged when you show up at the dump. So everyone is welcome.
Great. Thank you, Chris. A great project.
Chris, something? Diana Shing?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Chris, Shasta Trinity, right? So we had an opportunity to go to Shingle Town about a month ago. And I just wanted to say we're very impressed with the roadside's clearings. Did you guys have anything to do with that? Or, I mean, they they they've made a lot of what looks like good fuel reduction along the roads all the way up to Shingle Town.
I don't believe that's the Shasta Trinity.
No? Okay. Anyway, take a look. It looks great.
So go from Chris, just as a reminder that the trash cleanup is next Tuesday, the 25th, 9:30. Okay, so updates. We've got a little bit of time for some updates. Kelly, do we have anybody from the BLM?
No, we do not.
Okay. I guess probably from them, just from other meetings that we've had, their major gig right now is is the working on their, the update of their resource management plan. They're looking for, you know, they're, they're kind of doing public comment and that sort of thing. That's going to be kind of their focus for the next few months. And kind of in the, on the local scene, I think it was mentioned at the Recreation Committee meeting. Looks like the Ewing Reservoir Trail Project is certainly the NIPA is moving forward on that. I can't remember. I think Forest Service has approved theirs. And B L M, I think their NIPA is about done also. And lastly, they are working with the R C D and the Community Forest Steering Committee for a green tree project in the community forest that'll be a while. I mean, they haven't started the NIPA. They're just starting the, the resource evaluation. Forest Service, so we got we'll let Chris take a break for a few minutes and I was thinking, Carrie and Rachel, or if you're still on, this might be an opportunity for Rachel to introduce herself.
Yes. Hi, it's good to be here. So I'm Rachel Burkey. I'm the new forest superintendent on the Shasta Trinity. I started a total of five days ago. And came, came from San Francisco. Looking forward to working together with you guys, getting to know you a little bit better. Our focus in the next few months, I'm, I'm gonna have to be taking a bit of time to orient to the forest, get my feet under the ground. Down to the districts, we're going to be doing some readiness reviews of our firefighting teams to make sure that we're prepared for the upcoming fire season. And we'll also be getting out into the communities. We're going to be meeting our partners, establishing those relationships. So we are very excited to start rolling out and moving ahead with some of these projects.
Right. Hopefully we'll see you on some of our upcoming field trips, maybe.
Hopefully, that would be wonderful.
Okay. And so Shasta Trinity, other project updates. So I don't know whether that is Carrie, Chris, or Joe Stu, anybody want to jump in right now?
So we, we don't have any major project updates at, at this point in time. Primary focus has been looking toward the fire season and getting, getting ready for that. So when we meet, when we attend next time, we'll have, we'll have a better, better grasp of that.
Great. Well, thank you, Carrie. So Jerry, question?
A question. I'm wondering if there's an update on the whole zone management attempt, both for finances and resources. Scott Russell had talked about that. Any Forest Service person able to give a update about that?
I'll, I'll be happy to jump in unless Carrie wants to take it.
I will save my time to the gentleman on the West Coast.
You bet. So, so yes, the region five, so, so the state of California, all of the national forests have been organized into zones. We are in the North Zone, which is inclusive of the, the MODOC, Mendocino, Lassen, Clamath, Shasta Trinity and Six Rivers. So that, that's how our, our, our budget allocation comes. We meet, uh, the, all the forest supervisors in the North Zone meet weekly to kind of coordinate things. We, we essentially still do kind of divide things out by forest, but it's, it's helping us to kind of recognize the, the limitations we all have and try to figure out how we can work better together with what resources we have. And I think it's working fine, but we are in a growing, you know, learning to grow and work in this new environment. We have a new kind of budget model in, in the agency to, to try to help us be more accountable with the, the funds we have. Essentially, Congress wants to be able to know when they give money to the agency for, for a given purpose, they can see that that money from, i- is going to the purpose that it was designed for. So, so we're trying to, again, be more transparent, more fiscally fiscally responsible, that's probably the word, but, but really just, just so, so that you can see where, where a dollar goes and how it gets divided up and what it costs for us to do business as, as an organization. So all of those things are kind of happening at the same time and, and there are a little bit of growing pains, but what I can say is that a, a, all of us in the Northern Zone do work well together and, and and, and it shows and we're able to compete for, you know, dollars and, and, and projects really well because of the nature of the relationships that we have. And I expect that to continue in particular relevant to this group with the Shasta Trinity and the Six River. Truly happy to have Rachel Burkey and Carrie Otto there. I, I, I think we, we've got a good working rapport and we'll, we'll continue to do that and, and, and strive to be, you know, more consistent in, in how we approach, uh, working with the collaborative on both sides of the border. I think there's some, some, some value that, that we can get in, in, in handling things more similarly, uh, so that it's not a, a different answer depending on which, which side of the, the, the line you're on. So that, that's something I think we're going to be working on, 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 on doing a better job as well. Does that kind of answer the question or, or is there some, something else you'd like me to kind of dig into there?
No, I, I think that was fine. I appreciate the update and yeah, look forward to some continuity between the forests for sure.
Great. Okay. John Knight?
I, I saw on the news recently that the Forest Service is having trouble staffing its hotshot crews. Is that something that you guys can verify? And if it's accurate, how are you addressing it?
Well, I'll, I'll jump on that one again and, and, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. So I, I'm not aware of us in, in the North State having a challenge, uh, staffing our hotshot crews. Where we are challenged is, is getting enough folks for our engines. So our, our, our hotshot crews, uh, I believe are all going to be operational and, and, and fully staffed. Our engines, we're having some challenges getting, getting all of the kind of leadership positions filled. So some of our engines are not going to be seven day effective. They'll only be five day effective. And, 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 and there's a handful of engines between the Six Rivers and, and the Shasta Trinity that, that we're not going to be able to, to staff. So what, uh, what we're going to do is we still have the, the, the people to put on them. So we're going to make engines, we're calling them super engines, where, where, where there're going to be more than five, five point O staff will have, you know, anywhere from six to 10 people assigned to an engine. So they'll have the engine as well as additional folks. And it's going to be a mix between kind of a hand crew and an engine. We're, we're trying to find different ways to, 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 to meet those needs. We are fairly well staffed, but we're not as, as fully staffed as we'd like to be. And, and, and part of the challenge is, is, you know, it's expensive to live up here. It's, it's rural. You know, and, and, and getting folks to do the work that we're asking them to do. There, there, there's just some challenges there, but the agency is, is aware of it. It's not a thing that's, that's unique to us here. And, and the Secretary of Agriculture is also very aware of it. So there's some, some work to help us be more commensurate with, with some of our firefighting partners so that, that the folks, so that it is again, a, a more appealing place to work and people are getting kind of reimbursed commensurate with some of the other organizations that are out there. So it, it is a challenge. The crews are not necessarily the challenge, but it is a challenge for us to get all the individuals we need to, to fill all of our modules.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. So Carol had a comment or a question?
Well, to follow up Ted, um, from the, you know, because I'm with the Volunteer Fire Department, what's the status of the Cooperative Agreements?
I am glad you asked. Yeah, I, I, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked. So, so there's a, a new, and I don't want to get too far in the weeds, but there, there's a new kind of a group standard agreement that has to use a, a, across the country for, for our local agreements and, well, in, in, in Region Five, in particular in California. And, and part of the challenge is, is part of that agreement, it has a 12 hour response time of, of, of free service. And that just doesn't work for volunteer fire departments. That may work for municipal fire departments that are staffed, that are funded at a different level. So Region Five has requested a variance for that, and that's back at Washington DC. We don't have the, uh, uh, authority to, to grant that variance here in, in the state locally. So we've been waiting to update our local agreements until we get that variance in place. My understanding is it's likely to be granted. So it won't be a 12 hour period. It'll be a four hour period. And, and, and so that, that's going to be, that, that will work much better for us than what, um, what had been initially rolled out. So the reason we haven't moved forward with these agreements is we don't want to, we don't want to move out until we, we have that variance in place. And my understanding is that we should, we should be getting that here in the very near future.
So four hours with the retroactive reimbursement?
Correct.
That would be great. Thank you.
And my son say hi.
Three and a half hours last week with you guys.
Okay, thanks. So other Forest Service, Six Rivers or Shasta T updates? Lejana?
Yep. Uh, so on the Mad River, uh, the first couple of items are just reiterating what Ted has already covered. He mentioned that there's been some community outreach and I just wanted to point out that Kristen Lark, you all know, the District Ranger, she held a community meeting over in Ruth with K MUD in attendance, did a really good job reaching out to the community to, to let them know what we're, what we're working on and to take questions from them to hear their concerns. So that happened a couple of weeks back. And we, we hope to replicate that experience in some other communities. Additionally, we, you know, Ted mentioned the CE has been signed for the Three Forks Fire Salvage Project. And my understanding is that next week, we will, potentially next week, we'll have Trinity River Lumber starting to cut. On the August Restoration EA, that's ongoing right now. We're still working with N C R C to produce a, you know, the proposed action and move into scoping hopefully in the next, uh, next few weeks. The details of the, uh, that project are kind of what was covered by Ted on that map, looking at Oak Woodland Restoration, Fuel Reduction Corridors, Hazard Tree Removal, Reforestation for Establishment of Shaded Fuel Breaks. And then also a development of a radio repeater on Grizzly Mountain. Ted also mentioned the South Fork Mountain Fuel Break, so I won't go into that, but that's on the horizon. The other updates are, we have suppression repair is ongoing. We have the Bear Planning has been completed. And we have an agreement in place with T C R C D. It's been assigned and executed. So that is ready to, to be utilized to implement the treatments that were planned out by the Bear Team. We also are working with W R T C and Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. They're applying for a C C I Forest Health Grant. And that project is going to be covering, uh, doing some reforestation around Ruth Lake and Mad River Headwaters. It's going to be about two, 2,200 acres of the district's property as well as some private property. Additionally, there's going to be about 750 acres of US Forest Service lands getting reforested on that project. So that's being worked on to, for submission right now. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on how that develops. That's everything on Mad River. I'll just add one more item and that's regarding the Trinity County Rack. And as some of you on this call know, you're on that committee. So it has been fully approved. We have submitted F R Ns for meetings in June and July. We tried to get meetings in April, excuse me, May, and they said that we needed more time. So our first meeting will be Monday, June seventh, at four thirty. That is going to be open to the public. So everybody is welcome to attend that. There'll be posting for that meeting. It's going to be currently still held on Microsoft Teams. And that is that. I see a hand up with Arnold.
Well, I was going to ask about that and maybe you could just back up and say what you're doing over there on Six Rivers and how long are you doing it?
Uh, yeah, myself, so I am currently Kristen's Deputy District Ranger on the Mad River. I'll be here until August first. Unless there's something that changes, but then at that time I'll be going back over to Shasta Trinity where I work as the Partnership Coordinator. Some of the duties I pulled over from Shasta onto the Six Rivers are to continue as the Rack Coordinator. So I'm still working as the Trinity County Rack Coordinator. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, Lejana. And yeah, so will there be just like a press release kind of thing about the public nature of the Rack meeting?
There, there will be and the gentleman that mentioned that, or somebody mentioned that the record search light is not widely circulated in Trinity. We'll have to take that into account. That is where we publish typically, but we'll see about getting it published in the Trinity Journal. And I believe you've mentioned the Trinity Herald as well. Is that correct?
That, that I'm not familiar with.
With the, just the Trinity Journal is another good, okay, yeah.
So, yeah, and, and for the, you know, the good of the order, the, you know, Kristen, when you guys flew the, the Three Forks project, you know, we, we would typically be receiving, um, either myself or through the collaborative facilitation email, we would get those notifications. And then when we get those notifications, we pass them along to this group as well. So like when those official press releases come out, just send them along to us and we'll, we'll get them out to, to this group.
Sounds good. Appreciate that, Carol.
Great. Okay. So any, anything else with the Forest Service? No? So do we have any, do we have anybody from N R C S?
Uh, it doesn't look like Aaron is here. But I did get a note, I did get a note from Christine Jordan, uh, with US Fish and Wildlife that she had a, a message that she wanted to relay since we were talking a little bit about owls earlier. She said that she wanted to share with everyone that the January fifteenth, 2021 Revised Critical Habitat Rule for the Northern Spotted Owl is still not effective. It will not be effective until December fifteenth of 2021. Between now and then, this US Fish and Wildlife Service may propose a refined, proposed rule or other action. The short of it is that the 2012 Critical Habitat Rule remains in effect currently. And she said that she would work with some, some other potential folks to get a barred owl presentation together for a future meeting.
Okay, great. So that, uh, last kind of organizational updates, Watershed Center and then the R C D. We got a few minutes.
Want to jump in there, Dylan? Or is Nick on still? Actually, Nick is.
Yeah, Nick is.
Yeah, I'm on. If Dylan's not on, I can do it real quick.
I'm not seeing him.
Okay, so, um, work we have going on right now, doing some fuels work with the B L M Poker Bar Road and then up towards Old Lewiston Turnpike. Starting next week, we are working out at the Sims Project outside of Hyam Palm. That's a post-fire project from 2004. We're still doing some fuels work around. We will be moving over doing work on Middle Hay Fork pre-commercial thinning and, and some additional work on private properties around Hay Fork throughout the summer. Basically got two Sawyer crews, chipper and masticator operating, doing sort of active fuels work through the season. Now we've got a bunch, bunch of technical crews that are doing assistance for both Shasta Trinity and the Six Rivers. So botany wildlife and forestry crew working on the Six River side and the Shasta Trinity side. Just getting started with a bunch of Humboldt State students actually starting on Monday. So Dylan's going to be on board and a bunch of new staff. So we'll be helping out both forests with their. So we'll be helping out both forests with their August Fire Complex, planning both the sort of NEPA, survey and compliance work and the layout for actual project implementation throughout the summer. And then the last thing I'll note is, uh, the Regional Conservation Partnership Program, which was a carve-out of, uh, NRCS's equipped program. There's, uh, one, this is the last year of sort of available funding of a five-year oak woodland and conservation, uh, equipped carve-out. So I've mentioned this at each collaborative meeting, if you know any landowners who are interested in doing cost share program with NRCS in their oak woodlands, uh, they qualify and could work with our team and NRCS to basically, um, put together an application.
Great. Kelly, in a couple of minutes, highlights?
A lot going on. Yeah, uh, as was mentioned, uh, earlier, Lejon helped to actually, um, expedite a couple of different agreements for bear recovery funding, both on the Shasta Trinity National Forest Side, uh, as well as the Six Rivers Side. And that's primarily, uh, roads work, uh, infrastructural kind of roads work, um, for our crews. We have four contractors, uh, or equipment operators, uh, running right now. And basically out, uh, currently on Shasta T, that one happened first. We're, we're kind of out there right now working on that. And will be for most of the rest of the season.
Go ahead, Larry, you have a question?
I'm sorry, no.
So, uh, we also have fully staffed up our, uh, three fuels crews doing a lot of work, uh, on BLM lands. As, uh, Nick mentioned, we're kind of working out in similar areas, Poker Bar, Lewiston, and currently, uh, Douglas City areas. And, uh, I guess the short of it is we're also working on, um, the third round of Joint Chiefs, which would be for fiscal years 22, 23 and 24. We were hoping to have a draft out, um, today, but it looks like it'll probably be Monday for review. Uh, probably will be reaching out to Jason Coe. They had a soft deadline of, uh, May 25th. Um, we had submitted a, um, one-page, uh, concept proposal at the end of April, which was accepted. And we've been collecting information from the three primary ranger districts in the NRCS, um, to pull that next round of funding together. So, uh, what we have together up to now is, is roughly a $4.2 million, um, ask on that program, which is up a little bit from the last one, which I believe is like 3.8. That was from 19 to 21. Let's see, we're also partnering with the McConnell Foundation. I have reached out at the California Association of RCDs in the before times. They had a meeting, uh, but their annual meeting was, uh, in Redding. And, uh, I met Alex Carter, who actually is from the Carter family, who is, uh, is a Trinity, like a longstanding historic family up in the northern part of the, a part of the county. And, um, and so we've been talking back and forth ever since then. And, uh, with like a couple of months ago, he reached out to me and said that McConnell Foundation was willing to support the RCD in producing, uh, um, an application, uh, through, for a proposal, basically a proposal through CALOES or FEMA funds, uh, for doing fire prevention at landscape scale. And so we've just, uh, signed an agreement with them. We also did a one-page sort of concept proposal. That is a $10 million proposal. That, uh, will basically be an out years. He said it takes them about three, two to three years to actually get through the application process. So, um, I wanted to announce that out to this group that we will be, and the Fire Safety Council next week. That we will be beginning to gather information about how we can possibly bring those sorts of dollars into the, into the county. Uh, because of the somewhat restrictive nature of that funding, um, we would probably not be doing any implementation ourselves, but we would be administering, uh, the implementation of that project. And, uh, and it's primarily, well, almost, well, it's exclusively, for funding, doing fuels reduction projects on private lands, which, uh, also is sort of a little bit, uh, daunting for us because it's, it's a lot of money. But again, it's for out years and we've got some time to sort of get this together. But they wanted to partner with us and pay us to do, you know, the sub-application, which is due on the 18th of June. So we'll, we'll be working closely with McConnell Foundation, the Fire Safety Council and our other partners, um, uh, Watershed Center, uh, and, um, some other folks to try and begin to, uh, SPI, uh, to begin to process out how this will actually, you know, work, uh, for the county. Uh, but it was just an, it was just an opportunity that we couldn't really pass up. So that's a pretty big, uh, step forward. We also got submitted this week, uh, $4 million Forest Health Ask, which is for primarily doing, projects on Forest Service and BLM properties in the, I'd say they're Covington Mill. Covington Mill, Weaverville Community Forest and some of the BLM properties, uh, up in Grass Valley Creek and Indian Creek kind of area. As well as a fire prevention, uh, uh, $2 million fire prevention grant that, uh, or proposal that, uh, has projects that were identified in the CWPP, kind of all over the northern, you know, like, uh, the Trinity River watershed area. So we have a lot of big potential projects coming up. You know, that will fund a lot of this work as we're, as we're moving forward. Think that's basically the big news for RCD.
So questions or comments for Nick or Kelly? If not, we're starting to run out of time. So kind of concluding business. Uh, we have a couple of people who are not active members, or at least were on, uh, members of the public. If they had something they wanted to say, Samantha and, uh, there was a Jeremy that I don't see that now.
I would just say thank you very much for letting me, uh, listen in. It's been really informative. And I'm sure that I've got some notes, been taking notes on, share this with Mike and, uh, see if it gets back to you if you've got any comments on anything, but great work you all.
Thanks. Okay, so from the facilitation team, I just had a, wanted to float out the idea. Our next full collaborative meeting is July 16th, which is a couple of months away. And, um, I'm an optimist with regards to, um, pandemic kind of easing up. So I would like the agencies and Kelly to begin thinking about uh, the possibility of, uh, a meeting where we actually are not just staring at each other on screens, uh, but maybe are in the same room together. Or at least a hybrid meeting where people who would like to, who are vaccinated could be live. Other people could join by, you know, by, by Zoom, but I think, I think it might be, we might be approaching that, that point in our, um, wrap-up of the pandemic. So just, you know, keep that in mind, folks, as a possibility. I'm thinking Weaverville Fire Hall, if it were to be live, because I think we'd have the potential with their uh, big flat screen that they have there to be able to, um, keep people in on Zoom if they wanted to join by Zoom.
Is there any update from like, say, the Forest Service about, um, I know that you all are generally still working remotely. And maybe Lejon, you can answer this question. Is there talk yet about, uh, lift, you know, like as CDC guidelines have lifted uh, about a return to work, um, like in person?
Carrie, can you jump on that one?
So, so, so I'm happy to jump on that one. And, and so you're correct, the CDC guidance has, has been updated. And USDA and the Forest Service are thinking through very carefully how, how do we implement? And what does that look like for us as a forest? How does that look like with our interface with the communities that, that we serve? Um, we don't have a detailed plan yet, but it is coming, is coming shortly. And, and once we have it, we'll let you know the changes.
Great. That's all, that's all we can hope for. Maybe we have a meeting outside or something like that at Loudoun Park.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, Carrie and Rachel. Agenda building, so items for July that people are interested in. Carol?
Um, I was wondering if the Forest Service could give us an update on where they're at with the, um, alert wildfire camera implementation. Now, last we heard, they had the list of potential sites. And we've talked about this at the Trinity County, uh, Fire Chiefs Meeting a lot, but haven't been able to get details. So maybe we could get an update on where they might be, um, installing alert wild, wildfire cameras on Forest Service structures.
Okay. Others, any, anybody else, anything else? Probably, uh, updates based on the, uh, field trip in June, to talk about with the forestry committee. So I think certainly we would want to have some time to kind of talk about that.
Who is going to organize that and set the dates and find the places to go and so on?
I think Kelly was going to focus on the, working on the dates and I'm certain it's got to be in concert with, uh, the Forest Service and probably Fuel Break Committee, maybe just to help refine the locations.
Were we intending that to be on, uh, the Shasta T side or on the Six River side?
Go ahead, Joseph.
Well, I'm not sure. I, you know, I hadn't really thought about it, but, uh, there's opportunities on both. Maybe, uh, maybe we could go look at a, uh, project up close to the top of South Fork Mountain. One on the, on the Shasta T and another one on the Six Rivers. You know, we're going to be focused on, on, uh, plantation prescription and fuels cleanup. So there's opportunities there on the, near the top of the mountain.
So maybe we, I can, we can work with, uh, Chris, uh, Losi and, uh, and Kristen and, or Lejon, just to try to organize a time and a day for that.
At the time we were talking about it, Ted spoke up and said he liked the ideas, so.
Yeah, Luke Ted and Chris?
Yeah, um, good ideas, you know, I was hoping to, um, I think I probably, when working with an external group, I kind of forget that it takes a lot of time to plan things in advance. And I should probably mention that we were hoping to hold a meeting to discuss phase two in June, which I know is, is, is getting closer and closer now. So, um, but I'm happy to, um, you know, I think Tara would probably be better, better host if you want to look at plant, if you, if you're hoping to look for, um, you know, units along side, right along the east side of South Fork Mountain, Tara would probably better, be a better, um, host, but I can certainly relay that to her when she returns. But I, I also realize now I, we really have a meeting to talk about phase two. But I, I wanted to give it some, some breathing room before we kind of jump in with that. I don't know if that's an answer you were looking for, but that, that's the situation.
Hey, Pat, it's Barry Stewart.
Yeah, Barry.
Yeah, another one on the agenda. We've kind of had it on the back burner now, or COVID knocked it out. It was on, uh, consideration and it was on agenda concerning, uh, uh, the, uh, marijuana grows, illegal grows on the forest floor, concerning mostly with, uh, fishing game, but with, uh, the eradication. One, cleanup, two, three, major concerns on the, uh, on what they're doing on our watersheds, herbicides, pesticides.
We could have an update from the cannabis committee. That'd be great.
Okay.
Lejon, you kind of went, came live on your photo. Did you have something to add also?
I just wanted to follow up. Uh, Chris was mentioning, uh, that he would follow up. Well, pass a message on to, um, to find, uh, with, to, to Tara, excuse me, uh, to find a, an appropriate project site. Uh, I'll do the same with Kristen, mention this to her when she comes back from her annual leave and we'll, uh, identify a site in time. Uh, if you want to follow up via email, it might be best.
Okay. That sounds great. And that, that sounds like plenty for an agenda, you know, and, and I guess for field tripping, I'm assuming that outdoor field trips are still a go with the Forest Service, uh, with appropriate precautions. And with that, uh, anybody, anything else for the good of the order as we hit 12:30? There we go. Okay, um, want to thank everybody for joining. Thank Kelly for hosting. Forest Service for, you know, sticking with us through all these Zoom meetings and all. And, um, I'm going to have lunch and then start working on a letter for, um, the Board of Supervisors. So with that, everybody, um, enjoy the sunshine. You know, it'll, before you know it, it'll be summer, it'll be hotter and all, all get out. So have fun.
Thank you, Pat.
Bye-bye, Pat.
Thanks, everybody.
See ya.
See ya. See you, Chris.
Thank you. Have a great day.
I'm staying on. Lejon, are you still there? Oh, he stepped off.